On the air live, the worshipful, the worshipful Mayor of Ramsgate, councillor Pat Moore.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome members to the annual meeting of the town council and welcome to residents and businesses who are watching online. Could I just ask you to turn your mobile phones off or turn them to silence? Please don't use them while the meeting is taking place. Grateful. Item one on the agenda is apologies. Items two, declarations of interest. Is there anybody got any declarations of interest with matters on the agenda this evening? Definitely silence, we'll take that as a no then. Item three, election of Chair of Council for 2025-26. Can I have anybody who wishes to stand as Chair or anybody wants to put somebody forward as Chair please?
First councillor Alvin.
Second that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who was, wishes to put their name forward? Just another lot of silence, thank you. In that case then, can I have a show of hands please for that? Thank you very much, that's carried and thank you everybody for having, for having your faith in me for another year. Grateful for that.
Read this out.
So I just have to do the declarations of acceptance. Okay, declaration of acceptance of office. I councillor Steve Alvin have been elected to the office of Chair of the Town and St Paul Limb of Ramsgate. Hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code of, the code as to the conduct which is expected by members of Ramsgate Town Council. Thank you. The next, the next item is the election of the Vice Chair of Council. I am going to propose councillor Nixie as Vice Chair and a second please, seconded. Anybody else wish to stand for the position of Vice Chair of Council? So no, so in that case a vote, all those in favour, councillor Nixie, unanimous, thank you, that's carried, thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Just got to sign a bit and say a bit.
Thank you. Just not really should my, so. Anne-Marie Nixie, having been elected to the office of Vice Chair of the Town and St Paul Limb of Ramsgate, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Ramsgate Town Council. Thank you very much, cheers.
Congratulations. Item five is election of Mayor for 25-26. I'm going to propose councillor Hudson to be Mayor for the following year. Do I have a second please? Is there anybody else who wishes to put their name forward to stand as Mayor for the following year? So if we can vote on that, all in favour please show. That's carried. Congratulations.
The only one who wasn't going to vote.
So I just wish to, just to say if Mayor would, the outgoing Mayor would just like to say anything to Council.
Oh, I'd like to thank you for putting up with me for the last two years. I'd like to thank all the council staff for their support and help. Thank you.
Wait for Paul to come back in and then we'll adjourn.
Alright.
He's got, he's got a stripper off in him. Relax, I boot councillors until our new Mayor attends. Worshipful, the worshipful Mayor of Ramsgate, councillor Laurie Hudson. Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm Laurie Hudson, having been elected to the office of Mayor of the Town and St Paul Limb of Ramsgate, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of the Ramsgate Town Council.
You now need to appoint a chaplain or a faith leader, I don't know if you have one as yet that you thought of.
Not as yet.
Not as yet, okay, okay then, all right, thank you. Next part is to appoint your consult or mayoress. You had one?
My husband.
Martin Hudson, Martin, Martin. Yeah, it's for you, yeah. There you go, Martin.
Oh, go, sorry.
And I just asked, you'd like to give thanks to the previous Mayor?
I certainly would like to thank councillor Pat Moore. She's been an absolute icon for me. She's taught me as much as she can about the role. She's been approachable, she's given history lessons on Ramsgate, the chain and the badge of office, she could write a dissertation on. I think you've represented Ramsgate very well, you've served the town very well and thank you for what you've done over the past few years. Been in office since 2023 and previous to that, you, you've obviously represented Ramsgate in various roles but thank you for your support.
Thank you. Next item, item six is election of Deputy Mayor for 25-26. Are there any proposals for the seat of Deputy Mayor?
I propose councillor Pat Moore.
Councillor Pat Moore, is there a second please? Councillor Pat Moore, councillor Green, thank you. Is there anybody else wishes to put themselves forward? No, so can I have a show of hands for councillor Pat Moore? That is carried.
I must have folded another thing, can I?
Next, you.
Must remember.
I, Pat Moore, have been elected to the office of Deputy Mayor of the Town and St Paul Limb of Ramsgate, hereby declare that I take the said office upon myself and will duly and faithfully fulfil the duties thereof according to the best of my judgement and ability. I undertake to observe the code as to the conduct which is expected of members of Ramsgate Town Council.
Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you.
Right members, we're now moving on to item seven which is committees and that's to appoint the Chair and Vice Chair of the following committees, obviously I'm going to take these one at a time. The first one is finance and general purposes. I propose that councillor Green be the Chair of F and GP, can I have a second please? Anybody else wish to put their names forward? Oh, no, I can add a vote then please, if you're all in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried. Congratulations. Okay, also along with that is to do the Vice Chair of Finance and General Purposes and I'm proposing councillor Heatherington to be the Vice Chair of, of F and GP. A second please, councillor Nixie. Anybody else wish to put their name forward? No, can I have a vote on that please, show? That's carried, thank you very much. Right, next item is Chair of Planning and Infrastructure Committee. I propose from the Chair again is councillor Makinson and can I have a second? Is there anybody else who wants to put themselves forward for that particular post? No, all those in favour, please show, that's carried, thank you. Then move on to Vice Chair of Planning and Infrastructure. I'm proposing councillor Heatherington, Vice Chair. Can I have a second, councillor Crittendon, seconded. Anybody else wish to put their names forward? No, okay, then can I have a show of hands please? That's carried, thank you. Town Promotion is the next one and from the Chair again, I'm going to propose councillor Crittendon as Chair of Town. Promotion, can I have a second please? Thank you, anybody from eight? Is there anybody else who wants to put themselves forward? No, okay, then can I have a show of hands please? That's carried, thank you. Vice Chair of Town Promotion, I'm going to nominate councillor Huxley as Vice Chair of Town Promotion.
Second.
Second please, councillor, Crittendon, why am I not surprised? Is there anybody else wishes to put their names forward? No, in that case then can I have a show of hands please? That's carried. Now I have to admit to the next one which is Asset Management, this, this is the new committee that you, that formed a little while ago, that's never kind of met yet. And I couldn't remember who the Chair was, so I phoned, I phoned the town clerk up and said, who's the Chair, so I said, you are. So on that then I will propose myself to be the Chair of Asset Management. Is there anybody else who, who would like to be Chair of Asset Management?
Don't talk rush at once.
Is that a no? So in that case then can I have a show of hands please? Okay, so that's myself. And there is Vice Chair of Asset Management and I propose Anne-Marie Nixie, councillor Anne-Marie Nixie as the Vice Chair. Please, a second, that's, have to have him in a second and everything. Anybody else wish to put themselves forward? No, right, I sounded a lot of machine, don't I now? So all in favour please show, thank you. Now, there, there is one thing on, there is one group that's, that's not on here and I'm, I'm adding it. Whether that's right or that's wrong, I'm, I'm, I'm going to add it and that's our climate change group. And because of the way that it's gone, it's been brilliant, been brilliantly chaired, I'm going to propose councillor Austin to continue in that, in that role. Can I have a second please? Anybody else wish to put themselves forward for that? All right, okay, councillor Austin, you are elected, thank you. If we have a show of hands, yes, please, sorry, I should have said that right, sorry. Now, Vice Chair of that, I'll, I think councillor, I want to propose councillor Alvin to see whether he wants to actually do it. I think he'd be brilliant at doing it. So can I have a second, councillor Austin? And anybody else wish to put their names forward? Right, all in favour please show, thank you, that's carried. Thank you very much for that, members, that's that particular part of our agenda completed and congratulations to all of you people who have now decided you put yourselves under the hammer. Thank you very much. Sorry, the town clerk pointed out that we note that the reference will remain the same for the committee meetings in May. There will then be an opportunity to consider these in detail at council meeting on the 28th of May. And that's that. Item eight is minutes and that's to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the council held on the 26th of March 2025. I propose acceptance, is there a second please? Councillor Austin, members, any comments on the minutes at all? No, in that case then, can you please, all in favour of the minutes please show? Thank you, that's carried. Item two, the minutes of the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 16th of April 2025 and I can say only questions of record may be considered on this, so I propose acceptance of the, of the minutes. Can I have a second please? Councillor Driver, anybody, anybody got any questions in relation to the minutes? No, okay, then can I have a show for acceptance? That's carried, thank you very much. Onto item nine, policies and procedures. Item one of nine is to approve the standing orders of the council and I'm going to propose acceptance of the stand, standing orders. Would there, is there a second please, councillor Green?
Let me add a suggestion that I've made within the draft standing order. At this meeting, there's a very long list of policy and procedure that should be approved. In order to try and spread this out a little bit, tonight you're only asked to consider the really core documents. But at the moment, the things that are being moved forward to May's meeting is still a really extensive, long list of policy and procedure which is growing each year. And within the agenda that I sent out, highlighting in purple various documents that I think actually, if you were minded, could maybe be approved, delegated to F and GP to approve as opposed to bring this very long list.
We want to give you something to do, don't we?
Famous twiddling.
Members in agreement with that? I don't know what the Chair of F and GP thinks about that. You okay with that?
As a member of F and GP, you're not overjoyed but.
So with, with that amended in that role, the members agree? Thank you. Item two of nine, to approve the financial regulations of the council.
Thank you Chair, there's a number of changes which officers are going to need to implement in the new financial regulations, including the introduction of three-year budgeting, but that is for the, for the office to figure out. One thing that within the model financial regulations though is it's expected that there's certain levels of expenditure which must come to council for approval. At the moment, the committees that have budgets, for example Town Promotion, Town Promotion can spend up to any level as long as it stays within its, within the real budgets. It's whether you would like to continue with the current procedure or whether to actually set a figure where things must come to council. At the moment, the principle is that you can call, that any member can call in something from a committee to be considered by full council. If this is something that you'd like to consider in more detail, what possibly could be done tonight is to keep the financial regulations as we currently operate and maybe ask F and GP at the next meeting to consider this matter.
Members, any comments on what the town clerk has just said? Councillor Green, have you got a view on that?
No, it seems very sensible.
Okay, so if members are in agreement with that, will that as an amendment to the, to the, to the motion, to the item, members in agreement with that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Item three of nine, to note the code of conduct for members. So as, as town clerk just said, it's just for noting, so unless you've got any comments on that, then I propose that we can continue with the existing arrangement. So is there a second, can I have a second for that, councillor Shonk? All in favour please show, thank you, that's carried. Move on, item 10, calendar of meetings, that's to approve the schedule of meetings for the ensuing council year which is within, which is within the agenda on the end. Members got any comments in relation to that or any things that they'd like to change?
Thank you Chair, may I note that the F and GP committee has considered this draft schedule and didn't raise any comments or suggestions.
I propose, councillor Green?
I note that there's not an F and GP committee meeting for some months. Whether that's okay with the council? You're saying that you've just given us those.
Yeah, so item 10, with the calendar of meetings, members here.
Chair of F and GP may choose to call an extraordinary meeting if there's business building up.
You can have an extraordinary day David, if you don't, up to you. But members agree on the calendar? Agreed, thank you. There is an item. Members, if I can just revise that, on the meeting that was cancelled, there was a motion brought forward by councillor Green onto that agenda. It's a very important motion and it's in relation to Pie Factory. And at the meeting that we had about the empty high streets and that Zoe from Pie Factory was there, so I had a little quick chat with Zoe and the time, the time period for them to try and get a, Ken County Council to change its mind is, is running very, very tight. So by the time that we, we have the meeting on the 20th, 28th of May, it's going to be too late. So what I was going to say as well, we could still go forward a motion on that date but what I wanted to do, to do was when soon as KCC have got their selves together with cabinet members and leader of KCC, then we would have a letter prepared to go out as, as soon as that is, as soon as we, we know that. And, and that is for asking for Ken County Council to rescind their decision on Pie Factory and to, and to give the money to support them thoroughly throughout the forthcoming year. So if members are mindful, not asking you to vote on it, but if members are okay with that, then we would be happy to do that, town clerk and myself, because it's important that we get that done. Councillor Shonk?
I quite agree with that, we're Ramsgate Town Council, I've been in touch with Zoe. Zoe phoned me up today and she's dropped me a letter and I do my utmost. We're in new, new ground, but I have seen Zoe on several times. She works hard, I hope it's saved, it changed from where it is to commercial side, which is,
sorry?
It changed from where it is, KCC before, we had this hiccup with the elections. So I should do my utmost. I was never elected at KCC to make cuts, but you know the situation of the country at the moment. So anyway, she has been in touch, we dropped, dropped the letter round today and that's one of the first things I'll do amongst others, but that'd be at the top of the list because I am Ramsgate and we speak for all of us.
Thank you. You are all Ramsgate, I was saying to you on that. Thank you councillor Shonk, councillor Green?
Chair, I do think it would carry more weight if we voted on it and I was going to add to the motion.
Now, we haven't followed the procedure for this to be a councillor.
You'd have to wait until the 20th of May for that. We can't shut, we can't, that's why I wasn't asking for you to vote because I can't. But if you're all nodding your heads and that, we can get that prepared and ready to go and formalise it on the, on the 28th. Even though it might be after the time, if you see what I mean. When, when is, when is your first meeting? Because you've got to decide who's cabinet members.
That's in there tomorrow, which can be quite involved. You've got a lot of new people there but.
Yeah, but when is your meeting, when, when have you got your meeting?
Well, it's always in the middle of the month. But as we get our introduction done, you can't sort on any committees because you've got to go for that.
No, I know that.
22nd.
22nd of, 22nd of May is it?
So I was advised.
Okay, so well that's good then, we can. So are you okay with that, that we prepare a letter and as soon as the KCC have dare sort themselves out that we will send that off ASAP? Then we'll form, we'll formalise it with that, okay, thank you. Item 11, date and time of next meeting is Wednesday the 28th of May at 7pm and that is the end of this meeting. I thank you ever so much for all turning up and thank you for the election of our, of our new Mayor and I'm sure she will be fabulous like our other Mayors have been and, and we wish you, we wish you well.
With me for over 40 years.
No wonder you like yours. So thank you, members, that's the end of the meeting. Thank you very much, residents, for doing at home. And I thank the mayor this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, members.